KGIW, the town of West Town World and any other guests. I hope you all have a good Thanksgiving. Mr. St. Columbia, we're glad to see you back. I know you've been out with an illness and you're still recovering, so we're glad to see you tuned in here tonight. Ms. Sanders, are you able to call the roll? Are you on here?
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay. Davis?
Here.
St. Columbia?
Here.
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly? Forward?
Here.
Etherly? Franklin?
Here.
Crockett? I have four present, two absent.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We are going to do the minutes of November 25th at the next meeting on December 15th, and we're also going to do the treasures report on December 15th when we have the backup information from the bank. So we're going to move straight on to our business. We don't have a long agenda tonight, but we have an important agenda. So, we will start with information update, a little bit more than that on the job policy for the landfill. And at first, we were just going to just notify you that we've started the advertising. However, the issue that arose is that really we're advertising for a assistant director for landfill operations to not a general manager. General manager, state office. And Mr. Jones pointed out to me today that that really what we need to do is amend that to a assistant director for landfill operations. And I think Andre's on here now. Mr. Valley, our city attorney, we were talking about that. And if he's on here and he wants to, you want to discuss that? Mr. Valley, are you on here? No, he's trying to get on, but basically, the point of the matter is that what we're really trying to do is hire an assistant director for the landfill, not a general manager, but that was what we had in our existing base pay ordinance and budget, and so that's how we ran the ad. But in order to be compliant with state law, we need to amend that listing to assistant director for landfill operations. That will remove the requirement for a three-year master's license, which Mr. Jones has, it keeps us legal. Our editor, I mean, our engineer also has that license and it keeps us legal. So however, the ad does read that they will have to agree to begin the process of receiving their licensure upon so Mr. Valley's getting on now, and Andre, where we're just talking about the landfill position, and I was just explaining the issue. Do you want to chime in there?
How do you get on? Can y'all hear me yet? My phone.
Yes.
Okay, good evening to everyone. The landfill issue is, I understand it, when we discussed last meeting, we were talking about hiring someone would be a fox requirement of a foreman or a deputy director. We discussed departments that must don't supervise us and the position of being advertised as someone in that position. The last, I remember Mr. Franklin discussed whether the person was going to have the three years' experience and et cetera, or whether we were going to hire someone that comes in and obtained it on over the course of three years. And that question was left open. You all didn't vote on or anything like that. But the mayor is advertising at this point for the position. I didn't hear the discussion, so I that's where I am as far as what we are at this point. Hold on just a second. But yeah, did you have a question for me? Because I missed the beginning of
I was just basically briefing them on what we talked about. The general manager title requires the master's license.
Okay, yes, general manager title does require the master. And the only person you could hire is someone with the three years' experience if you did a general manager's license. I think you probably ought to keep it open for two purposes. This is a specialized job, and while we hope that we can hire somebody, my experience has been that when we hired Bob and others, we received very few applications of people who were actually qualified. There are not that many landfills in the state of Arkansas, and many of the people with these licenses are at other landfills. And so, we probably ought to keep our options open as far as advertising, whether you can hire somebody with the license or someone who could be trained because of that very issue. I think we've advertised this three times since I've been city attorney, and each time we've had difficulty because we haven't had that many applicants. And in fact, when the landfill was shut down in years past, when we met with ADEQ, they told us that was going to be a problem. We opened that you may not find a long list of qualified people to apply, and you may have to be trained to do so. And so, I would prefer the city council and mayor keep it open in that sense that you can hire either way.
So, Mr. Valley, what we need to do is pass a resolution that would amend the title to be assistant director. Is there anything else we need to do besides that?
Well, I think the thing is this, this requires, further requires changing the base pay. We didn't discuss that because we haven't created that position. You had a general manager, but we've never had a foreman per se or a deputy director. I say foreman because the language for the other two, when we're talking about the street sanitation have foremans. It could be either way, but it was my understanding that when you all discussed it last week, based on what you had said during last week's council meeting, that you weren't looking for a director, you look for someone below that. And what my thoughts were that we would do a cleanup base pay on December 15th to clean up all of them for the year, so we make sure we have everything going forward. Because I didn't know whether you all going to be on the budget tonight and on the budget on December 15th. But I think that you need to clean up base pay to have everything, so with no going in January, everything that we cleaned up everything for the year 2020 and 2021, we're starting out with a clear definition as to what position you have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ford?
The people who will move into the roles in street and sanitation, will there, should that be changed in the base pay also to assistant director to force consistency sake?
In my opinion, it should. Go ahead.
I'm listening. Either way is fine. If you want to call them all assistant directors, that's fine. If you want to call them foremans or have you choose, that's fine. But I think you do need to be consistent to answer your question.
My question is, well.
Yes, Franklin.
So, if this are the assistant directors or the foremen, are they going to receive, will they pay change? If you're going to still advertise, are you going to still advertise for the 50? Or what are your hopes to advertise this position as? That's one of my questions, because I think if Mr., the two people that are foremen in the street and sanitation, they should be compensated as well. And then, my thing with the position that you're advertising for, I would like for the, this is me. I would like for that person to have a license, some form of license, just in case something would happen, because I think the council can go back and if they remember when Mayor Hollerwell was the mayor, we hired a water manager who had no experience, no license, and the first thing that was thrown up in the council's face with the ability to obtain a license. If they're going to be on the landfill or any other thing that requires a license, I think a person, even if they're the foreman or whatever the case, they need some form of license before I can vote, and I think they need some license. That's anybody. What if, I said this last time, what if something happens to Mr. Jones or Mr. Fielder? What if something happened to these people? And we still got landpeople without a license. I think three is better than two any day. So, that's just me. And I mean, I think somebody should have, everybody should have some form of license, even the people that are at the landfill. I think we were told that somebody had an A or B, somebody had a B and somebody had an A and a C or whatever the case may be. But everybody at the landfill has some form of license. And I'm thinking of that was what was told to us in the past unless these people no longer work for the landfill anymore.
What's Franklin, if I may? I think that in all of your specialized departments, like your street, not your water and your landfill, that everybody needs to be moving towards having whatever licenses they can, to the extent the city can afford it. I agree with your proposition that the people have. So even if we advertise for it, the people who are there also need to be trained towards having it. Because it's one of those things that those things are required by statute. And it weakens our departments when we don't have people trained. Going to a separate department is one of those things that we had the same notion with Mustakaya. Mustakaya is here, and if he quits, you still have other people that need to have some of the licenses you have. And so, it's always good to have other people try. And I think, like I've told the mayor privately, I've told Mr. Jones, I've told Mustakaya and et cetera, people need to be trained so that we can have these additional licenses, because we don't want to be in a position of not having enough licenses. Now, as a practical standpoint, as I said before, I don't know what's in the market right now, but in years past, the market has dictated that we've been hiring someone who didn't have licenses for them to be trained because the issue was that there are so few landfills in the state of Arkansas and so few people with licenses that they stay where they are. And so, that is a practical issue. And again, it's been a while since we hired somebody, because Bob has been there for so many years. I don't know if that's still the case, but that's one of the cases that we have to think about is that this is very specialized and that there wasn't a lot of people that used to have them. Now, again, as I said, we've had Bob so long, there may be more people that have them now. I don't know that. We won't know that until we advertise. But I think that both of you all have good points. If anything happened to Mr. Jones, we have an issue, but the other part about it too is this. To the extent that if the market is like it used to be and you advertise, you might not get many responses or any responses. I think last time we got one application, maybe two, but when Bob applied, I don't recall. But with that, I yield, I hope you all just do what's in the best interest of the city at this point.
I think we should go a little further than that, not just have them, but to retain them or keep them updated. Because I remember sitting on council and we were presenting some copies of people's licenses that were expired or expiring.
And Ms. Ford, I'm with you on that, because when Bob, when Mr. Gasson was at the landfill, he had a guy that was working for the landfill who that was recommended to us that Mr. Gasson was getting ready to retire, and he still is, he still, I saw him a couple of days ago and I asked him, and I and he said, hey, man, I see y'all for the advertise, he has all of the licenses. Bob helped, he worked at the landfill on the weekends until Mr. Gasson got his, they worked to get his last license. I'm not advertising for him either, but I'm just saying, we need somebody there. And the way this application, this person will be trying to obtain grants and everything else for the landfill, which I think is a good thing. So, I have always said this, sometimes I know y'all get tired, but it seems to me, seems to me that we'll find out who this person is. Mr. Val, I'm not saying you know or anybody else knows, but to me, I do feel like in my heart for this to come back like this, the mayor knows who he wants and he going to get who he wants. And I'm pretty sure there's some people on the call knows who he wants and who he's trying to get. That's one of those things that I get tired of when it comes to certain things that we, it's a change or a backdoor thing, but I'm pretty sure everybody knows what's going on. Some of us do and some of us don't, and I'm not trying to say that everybody does, but this is one of those things, okay? Let's clean this up so I can get the person that I want. I don't care how many applications that I get, I want who I want. And that's what it seems like to me.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I would just say that, you know, the requirement to advertise 10 days is a requirement imposed upon the mayor and the city. The qualifications that come for those applicants are diverse. Some are stronger than others in certain fields. We are secure at the landfill right now when it comes to licensure, way more than we are at the water department. In fact, the water company is the weakest place we are currently when it comes to licensure and backup licensure. The landfill is not, I'm not, not only does Bobby have it, engineer has it. And it does limit the number of people who would apply. I'm not sure if 50,000 is still competitive at that level. Plus, this person will be responding to a director as a deputy director, will not be a director in their own right. So, for all those reasons, you know, I think the most flexibility we can have, the better on this position. However, having said that, I don't think the council or the city will be unhappy with who ultimately fills that position. And I really think, you know, this all started, you know, because of listening to the advice from the council, particularly Mr. Davis, who suggested that you know, Mr. Jones can't do it all. He can't be everywhere at the same time, and that's absolutely good advice. And landfill is positioned, unlike some of the others, where you really do need day-to-day onsite supervisor support. And so, I took that advice to heart, and you know, it's been a position that we haven't filled for some time now. But I, you know, I think listening to Ms. Davis and others, not, you know, input that they're correct, that it's something that should be. We do need an onsite supervisor day-to-day, and we need somebody who's qualified in those skills. And we need somebody who is actively, if not licensed already, working towards a license and due diligence. And yes, I agree, if you have a license, you should be required to renew them and keep them up. I think that's a good point as well. But as a practical matter, if we don't amend the title of this position tonight, we'll have to pull the ad down. So, because we we can't we can't fill it as advertised anyway, we'd have to change it. So I mean, I'm at your disposal. We'll pull that ad down and not fill that position at this time, if that's your if that's your direction. But as I understand it, we'd have to change the title in order to and re-advertise it in order to fill it at this point. So, I mean, I hope I made that all clear and confused you more, but if I did, feel free to ask questions.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, can Ms. Ford go first, ladies first, and I'll just come in after. Sorry, Ms. Ford.
I just wanted to know, if we pull it down, how far will that set us back? Because I'd like to see a change and say that that person should report to Mr. Jones instead of you, because and then, because Mr. Jones reports to you. If the person reports directly to you, there's no sense in having Mr. Jones there. So I think that that's a change that should occur also in that advertisement for the job.
And I'm not opposed to that. We can't put names, we can't use titles. And right now
Right, I didn't mean names, you know, I meant titles.
No, I know, I know. Right now, Mr. Jones is not technically the director of public works legally, so if we put reports to the director of public works, unless we go ahead with that too, then he'll be reporting to some position that doesn't exist yet. So
Well, maybe we need to handle that.
I'm all for it. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Franklin?
Yes, sir. Even with that, Mayor, I agree with Ms. Ford wholeheartedly. But what about the pay for the, if you go, we're giving, we're giving a title here. So what about the other, were the foremen, the foremans, will their title change as well? So, I mean, would their title and pay change? Because essentially, they're doing the same job as we're going to, as you're trying to advertise for this person. So, would they pay change, would they go from, or would this person's pay go down from the 50? Because this is another thing that bothers me. We're paying Mr. Gasson as a department head 50 or 55. So, we gave somebody $10,000 the other night. So, what I'm asking is, how does that change? Does this person's pay change? Because we took 10 from this person's salary to make sure we give to this another person. So, this person should be advertised for the 50. They should have at least a 40 or 42 to work up to the 50, because we move money to make sure we can compensate the director. So, those are a couple of things that I think you should look at, because the people at the at the street and sanitation department, where do they, where do they go from? They're hourly paid people, they're not salaried. So, should this person be an hourly paid person? Or should they be a salary? It's two things to look at. It's three, it's a couple of things to look at. And I think we should have, we should have had a budget workshop Monday or something, so we could hash out this, so we could have it together. That's just me.
Well, to answer that question, it is set at 50, which is in the base pay ordinance right now. 48, I think, would be fair, but I don't necessarily think that, the only, I would agree with all of that. What I would probably depart is that it's not exactly the same. Just like the water manager is not the same. You have a position that is going to be responsible every day for abide and by state and federal regulations that other departments don't have that sort of hanging over them, sort of hanging over them to make sure they stay in compliance, not just weekly or monthly, but every single day, because ADEQ inspectors can show up without warning at any time, and the fines for non-compliance are pretty significant. And Mr. Jones has, by the way, done an absolutely outstanding job, as has our engineer at keeping us in compliance without a general manager. But probably the biggest source of concern or stress that we have is not having somebody day-to-day, hour-to-hour to make sure that all the employees and all the actions that are taking place are not taking place or in compliance with state and federal law. And not just because they might show up, but because that's the right thing to do. But so, it's a little bit, I would argue, heftier position with heftier responsibilities that requires a salary that reflects that, and more importantly, is competitive for the people that we would want to hire to have that responsibility, if that makes, if that makes sense. And you're requiring certifications that the other positions you mentioned don't require and licensure. All of that gives it a different role that I think is meritorious of higher salary.
Yes, sir. I understand.
But the answer is, it's 50 right now, and I wouldn't mind if you lowered it to 48, but I think anything lower than that, we're starting to get to a point where it's going to be uncompetitive.
Mayor, I agree with you, but this is another thing you, I would say, look at, Mayor. I'm for the license, I'm for them to have some, at least a class A or B or something. But when you advocate for this person or any other person, you have people in the city that have been doing a job, and I'm just saying, these foremans, when Mr. Jones were out, they took care of the city in the same way that Mr. Jones did. But they had to take on Mr. Jones's responsibility until he got back to work. You know, and now, you're asking for this person, that Mr. Jones was supervised. But if something happens to that person, Mr. Jones has to jump back into the same position, and the street and sanitation will have to go up on the other two means, their supervision, because Mr. Jones is handling this position. So, I think you kind of should look at all three sides of it. You're asking for this, you're asking for this person.
Oh, let me add that I did, we're not, you know, my budget yet, but I did add an inquiry, a small increase for the other two positions you're talking about.
I mean, and I hadn't looked at it, but I mean, that's fine, but you know, Mr. Jones couldn't be as good as he is if he didn't have those guys. And I think, I think they deserve some praise as well. He wouldn't be as good as he is, as you praise, if he hadn't had Mr. Strata and Mr. Womack there to back him up every, it's a team effort. So, Mr. Jones has to have those people that he trusts in place to do their jobs while he's absent. So, that's one of those things I think you should look at. Mr. Jones is good at what he does, but he got people in place to prop him up to be as good as he is. And I think they deserve some praise or something, or something. So I think that's why I'm advocating for, if you want this position, is look at who would have to step in if something happens. And I'm not trying to hog your meeting or anything, but look at the people who are in place if something happens.
I think their jobs will expand, or what you require them will expand, because they'll have a little bit more supervisory position when they step into these positions. So, I think that's going to increase for these other two managers with street and sanitation.
Okay, well, we've got some other things on the agenda, so I don't want to belabor it. We can just, the issue is, we would have to pull down the, we can do that. I'm not saying we can't. We'd have to pull down the advertisement until we, you know, until we decide what we want to do, I guess. So Mr. Valley and I discussed just changing the title would be a simple solution. I wouldn't mind, like I said, going backwards to 48 on that position. Anything lowering that, I think, is difficult. But if we don't want to do that, we can move on tonight, and we'll just pull down the ad if we're not ready for that. Any input there before we move on? Or any action?
Under old business, can we not deal with changing the title? So at least we will have that done for Mr. the, over the public works department. That will be something that will be out of the way.
Mr. Valley?
I was trying to see a question. She said on the public works, or you talking about the landfill position?
No, I'm talking about Jones's position. That title needs to be changed in the base pay, and I think if we're going to pull the ad down and change it, then, you know, we will have a public works director then. It seems like we were in accordance in hiring one. Should we not go ahead and complete that and get that changed also?
The public works director, which I voted on last week, was, you gave him a raise. You, you gave him a raise for what he's doing because he doing all that, you didn't create a public works department. And we would have to create a public works department by ordinance and we would have to do the best base pay for that whole department. Uh and so that's why when we were going through discussions last week, the only thing that happened was. Mister Jones was given a raise based on all the additional responsibilities that he was doing and. The mayor has a temporary report for what he's been doing in three departments versus uh two departments. Uh and so all the thing that was voted on last week was uh pay raise. Now, as it relates to the public works, we would have to do a complete ordinance and we've had to create an department, we'd have to do a base pay and the budget to do all that. Uh as it relates to renaming the uh, the position, if you're authorized in the mayor to advertise for. Secondary position, whether it's a deputy director, whether it's a foreman, a half, you lang- you, you do the language. Uh then you still can vote on that. What I anticipate is, is on the fifteenth, when we come back, we will have one ordinance to cover. Everything y'all have done this year, so we, we won't have to go through four or five different ordinances to do, to correct any issues with base pay. Did it answer your question, Miss, Miss Ford?
I need here, thank you.
Okay, so do we want to do anything further on this item tonight? Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll move on and um. Then I'm gonna, uh we'll go ahead and pull down the advertisement tomorrow morning uh as soon as possible. Until we decide what we want to do. All right, moving on to the, the next item on the agenda. The Acuity Group, there's a proposal in your packet or. It looks like this. And uh it's basically this discussion is about the human resources agreement that, that they put forward. As many of you know, Mister Martin retired, he was our human resource director. Uh so those of us in, in administration positions um met, discussed. You know, basically the best way to move forward without Mister Allen, and of course, we still have legal. A lot of legal requirements um when it comes to H R with the Labor Department. And many other federal and state agencies, and it's, it is a daunting task to make sure that we keep up with all the federal state laws. So that Mister Valley doesn't have a hard time defending us. If we violate one of um, not to mention the. Hip, hip, I mean, the healthcare, health insurance laws and, and all the rest of that. So we went looking at two or three different options and what we ended up with was a proposal from H R Solutions. Proposal from Acuity Group. Uh it's out of Little Rock, but they're in a couple, about three states, I believe. Um and then separating some of the day-to-day tasks uh between Miss, Miss Halbert, Miss Turner. Mister Turner. Instead of hiring a separate position just for H R, and we have been acting in that capacity for several months now. Without Acuity Group's benefit, actually, but um, uh but we've been able to make do, but. We, we agree that this proposal would be a. Our, but basically they're our compliance, they're kind of our engineers, if you want to say. Our compliance officer to make sure we stay in remaining compliance with all those labor laws. And we're actually pretty impressed that we'll probably be. We probably sleep better at night than we could before. Essentially, they do this for a number of cities. And counties and, and other entities. And so having said that, uh it, it's really just something to bring up for information to discussion. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the human resource side of things uh just briefly. Um when I mention my budget here in a minute. But I just wanted to bring it up tonight, see if y'all had any objections to the Acuity Group agreement. Andre, did they have to approve that agreement? It's a, it's a contract, it's not a contract, it's a. Actual services rendered, kind of like um. It's for what they actually do, not uh, which is based on.
Is it a charge?
Actual hours billed, it's not a.
If it, if it's gonna be over five thousand dollars, they'd have to approve it.
Okay. Um so we, we estimate. Based on, this really is for twenty twenty-one though. Not for twenty twenty, but this is something that we're asked, we're anticipating would begin January, look, it don't, it, I think it says in the agreement. It starts January first for fiscal twenty twenty-one. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, it would. Cost no more than sixteen thousand dollars a year. We think it'll be a little less than that, but we wanted to. Uh err on the side of caution and, and be a little bit over that for appropriations purposes. So somewhere around maybe fifteen, but just to be on the safe side, we rounded it up to sixteen.
So would they be doing all the things that Mister Martin was doing?
Not everything, but they would be doing a lot of it, especially the um compliance issue, the compliant matters, compliance matters. Uh making sure that we're in compliance with all federal and state laws, those, those are the big issues. Being on call for us to ask questions, uh they, they work with us on some solutions for onboarding employees. And some, if you look in the proposal, there's a phase one and a phase two. Uh phase one is essentially, you know, ma- making sure our files are accurate. Uh our hiring processes are legal. Uh now, we don't have any gaps that we might have come back to hurt, you know, haunt us later. And also cons- what I would call consulting, you know, and we call them with questions, what about this and what about that situation, which comes up all the time. In fact, we just had one, we just discussed a situation a few minutes ago regarding an advertisement and some of the issues you can get in there, so. Allowing for that, plus they use a number of employees, they use as a figure, calculating the cost. On some of the, some of the uh reporting that we have to do for I C A and other things. And the phase two is an automated system that, that we hope to get to eventually. Uh that'll make all of that reporting more automated, more accurate and easier uh for everybody. But that's in phase two.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have plans to replace Mister Allen with a?
That, no, that's what I was saying. What, what we're gonna do is, and this is, uh, we can have a wider discussion about this in the, in my budget, but. But what we've done is not replace Mister Allen, but uh with a position, but to spread his duties out between. Uh Mister Hal, Mister Turner and Miss Halbert. And. We have. I guess the biggest gap we've had has been some of those compliance issues. Which this agency Acuity Group uh fills, but it would start January first and.
Is there a reason that you don't want to replace Mister Allen with a qualified H R director?
Um we, we asked a couple of consultants to look at our situation and make some recommendations. Uh one was out of Fayetteville, who works with Municipal League and does H R. One was Acuity Group. And, and basically. Concluded based on their advice that we could separate those duties between Mister Turner, Mister Halbert. And use a third party for the compliance issues and save money and probably. Well, I would say definitely be in a, in a better situation than we were before. In addition to that, H R to have a single H R employee. Which we did, by the way, uh actually, I believe we advertised for that position initially, and I'm sure we did. And I interviewed some folks and um. I'll just say that we didn't get very many people with an H R background. Who were interested at that pay level. So at that pay level, we felt like it was going to be a better solution, and so did our consultants if we did it this way.
This has been since uh Mister Allen has been gone, was it the same pay raised? The, I mean, was the same pay as Mister Allen made or?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it was the base pay for Mister Allen, I don't remember what it was. The uh. That we, it was the base pay for his, his uh position, thirty-two thousand.
But Mayor, uh Mister Turner is not an employee, Mister Turner is a, an elected official and he's getting those. Uh extra duties?
Uh yes, ma'am, but he, he's doing um. Uh the fiduciary part of those duties. Uh figuring out payroll and, and all those kind of things, um which is certainly in the confines of what a treasurer does. And Mister, Mister Turner's on here, if he wants to address that, I'm certainly not gonna try to speak for him, but.
I, I, and Mister, I mean, I, I have a couple of questions. Uh I, I think what you're trying to do is, is good, but it just don't work for us because number one, you're giving a company out of Little Rock. Some business, and we have people right here in Helena that's qualified to do a job. And when you advertise a job, you only advertise it for a couple of days, then you took it down. Be honest with the city council, when you're trying to make moves, I'm not in favor of giving anybody outside of Helena, West Helena. Or if it's kind of a job that's not gonna create some tax dollars coming back into our, our town. You talking about giving somebody someone out of Little Rock or Fayetteville, we talking about Helena. I don't think that's a good idea to try to give anybody. Anything, we got people in Helena who are qualified to do the job. If they don't agree with you or me or anybody else, if they're qualified in human resource, I know a lot of people with human resource degrees. I think that, now this is just Chris Franklin, I don't think anybody outside of Helena, because nobody from outside of Helena is trying to give people in Helena a job. To make a better for their town. We, we try, we need to keep those dollars here and it can be locally to build, to build up Helena. I don't think that's a good thing, I don't care how good they are, the municipal league will recommend everything to you. But they are, they are out of Little Rock and got some stuff going in Fayetteville, let's think about the people here in Helena, they need to eat and work as well. That's just me.
Well, I, I mean, I don't disagree with your. Philosophically, fifteen thou- all but fifteen thousand dollars of that will be here and will be spent here. And I don't remember when we took it down, but I do know we had. I can remember at least three applicants and I don't have any, any H R experience. And I hadn't, and I didn't get any kind of a. You know, feedback from anybody else locally, so.
Can I finish, Mayor?
Oh, I thought you were finished, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, you, uh, and, and city, and council members, please forgive me, but the mayor uh did interview one, one person. He knows as well as I know, he don't know I know, but he interviewed somebody, uh somebody's niece i- in, in the city. And when it didn't work, when it didn't work out the way he thought it would, he decided to go another way. These are the things that I've started telling you are, that these games that are being played in the city. And then when it comes back, you want to tell the city council, oh, we want to go this way, you want, now, and I, and I, I respect Miss, Miss Halbert. She does a good job, but now Miss Halbert does a lot of work. And es- essentially, when you're not around, Miss Halbert is the mayor, she handles everything. And I think trying to give her some more responsibilities is not fair, because when you're not there, Miss Halbert takes on a lot of responsibilities. As the chief of staff and a whole lot of other issues, and I don't think it's fair to study. Crowd her desk with more work, I think what you should do is go ahead and try to get you a human resource director. And, and, and stop playing games, because when you can't get what you, what, what the people you want or you think, uh I'm gonna go this way, it doesn't work like that. People in Helena, you got some qualified people who, who can handle H R, can do the, do the job. Advertise it and advertise it fairly, advertise it for, for, for the ten days, not the three, not the weekend thing that you did. Because I know I, I was, I saw the weekend thing that you all had did when Mister Martin left. Mister Martin didn't really want to retire. You, and, and many of y'all don't know that, but it's, it's not, I'm not trying to play a game of causing confusion, I'm just telling the facts of what really happened around here. Because we only know things when it's beneficial to the mayor's office. That's the only time the city council is involved in anything is when the mayor wants something just like this, this public works, just like this.
I am gonna interrupt you.
I'm not.
You're making personal allegations again, and you just. I'm gonna ask you. I'm gonna ask you to present your facts, because they're, they're not facts.
You don't, you don't want me to do that? Okay, well, we presented, council, the mayor, the, the, uh, mayor, since you, you asked him for. You were gonna hire the police chief, chief niece. And I don't want to put her name out there, but you was gonna hire her. You, you brought it, and she came back here, you was gonna hire, then it backfired on me, so yeah, that's, check it out. If you be quiet, let me finish, you, it, it didn't work, because she declined, but she had just graduated. And you was gonna hire her, you was gonna slot her right in there, and that, and, and nobody didn't know, but you advertised for a couple of days, then you took it down. You know as well as I know, I saw what you did, the person, the person told me, I'm gonna be working for the city. And in that position, you play games just like all the other games you play, and I told you about, wha- wha- look, look at what you did. With the uh community center, I thought you said you was gonna bring an agreement to the city council, but you didn't. The people at the cons- community center yesterday and today, we have no written agreement. You're playing politics with city's property and, and employees, and it has to stop. You, you, you know, you know better than anybody else, you're playing games and, and see if I'm not out here investigating what's going on, the city council will be in the dark. But that's just how you operate, slick, and I'm tired of, every time you want something, you want to run it down our throat the day before. It's a good idea, it's not a good idea to hire a company where you got people in Helena and, and doing this pandemic that need work. And you how about going to give a firm in Fayetteville or Little Rock some work, and you got people here qualified to do the job? That doesn't make any sense, you taking our, our tax dollars to another, another county. You ain't thinking about Phillips County or, or, or the town, Helena, West Helena, you think about what you go, how it looks for you. Think about these citizens, think about how it's some people who are qualified, they're probably will leave their job to come work for the city. Because it's, it's not many employees that Walmart has, Walmart has more employees than the city. The school district has more employees than the city, and certainly the hospital has more employees than the city. Those people were, were probably, probably the person who works as, as, as up under human resources probably want to come work for us. If you advertise it, and they ain't gotta be harassed about a job. Now, you can, you can finish all the, you can finish talking.
Mister Franklin, there isn't anything you said that's accurate or true, and I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh rather than waste any more time on your half-truths political speeches.
That's why you're moving on.
Sir, you're not recognized, they're designed.
Have to be, and I have to be, that's why, that's why, that's why you, that's why you upset.
Your mouth at all.
It is.
You mentioned.
Yes, it is.
Because you say it, doesn't make it's true.
It is true, that's why you upset, that's why you upset, that's why you upset, that's true. I, move on, that's what I wanted to do.
Which is a one-time payment, pandemic payment.
Miss, uh Mayor?
You're not recognized, you're not recognized, you don't run this meeting. You can go have a political campaign speech somewhere, but this is not it.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh is it possible to put this on the agenda for the fifteenth so that we could discuss this position? Uh a little further in depth on the fifteenth? Or whatever, well, the budget workshop or whatever, the next meeting or?
We can definitely uh put it on the, on the agenda for the fifteenth, it's also in my budget and will be part of the budget discussions. And the workshops, uh the majority of the money that's saved by not. Replacing this position is gonna remain here in the city and compensate those people that are making up the difference. The uh difference is that we actually save a little bit of money. And we're gonna be in better compliance. And we did have at least three people that I interviewed for that position. And those three people didn't have the experience that was really requested of a position, and I don't know how long we advertised. But uh we usually advertise for the ten required days and didn't get the applicants that we were hoping to get. That's what actually happened. Um, it's in my budget as uh recommended by the administration, not just me, but all of us. As to how to better handle this. The uh position of HR director was created under former administration and for different reasons, for a different time. Uh, we think this is a better way to go forward. But yeah, we can put it on the next agenda. Um, no question about it. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the one-time pandemic payment. Um, if you look and have we sent out, I think, a resolution or it might be in your packet? That uh Mr. Mr. Turner and I uh and the administration have worked hard on this week. And I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna ask Mr. Turner if he would like to present that.
Well, I mean, it's just simply a uh a payment that we came up with. We thought it would be uh. It would it would be something that we would uh give to the employees in lieu of a. Bonus or incentive pay with the city operations weren't really uh. That great to uh present any type of incentive or Christmas bonus. So what we decided to do was uh. Something more appropriate would be to give a COVID payment, uh, COVID pandemic payment to the employees. Uh, and that would be. Uh, the cost of that would be reimbursed from CARE Act funds. I'm not exactly sure how much the. Total amount of the CARE Act funds would be. Uh, I know the municipal league sent us an estimate of about a of how much a maximum amount would be. I'm not exactly sure. I don't have it right in front of me. But uh those funds for the the COVID payment could be are reimbursable. Funds, I think the mayor spoke with someone at the municipal league, and so those uh funds would could be used for a COVID payment. And they could be uh reimbursed from uh the CARES Act, some CARES Act money. Uh, we decided to um give a. Payment in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars per employee, uh, three hundred and fifty dollars. For volunteer fire and part-time police and uh seven hundred and fifty for uh first responders. I sent you the the information that I sent you uh a second ago. The cost that are estimated for those uh payments would be around seventy seven thousand dollars. Little bit over seventy seven thousand, seven thousand, seventy seven thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars.
So any conversation or questions about that from members of the council?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner, uh, that mu- that money is actually was hazardous pay. Am I correct? That money would have.
It's not hazard pay.
Okay, so but 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 that money was supposed to be, you could have gave that money when the pandemic first started and we still would have been. Uh, re- reimbursed, right?
We didn't have any notification of that until just recently. The uh CARES Act didn't pass until. A couple of months ago, maybe, and the municipal league figured out. How it was going to be dispersed. No one knows how knew how it was going to be dispersed. And so that information came from the municipal league. So we just really uh became aware of any. Potential payments or how much it would be only a few weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, sir. Uh, my thing, my thing is this, uh, I I've I was I was notified uh like other companies who. Have uh applied for the CARES Act, who were are already given these types of bonuses. One, I I have a friend that she works for a business. And every month they would give her, because she's part-time, they would give her a hundred and fifty dollars per month. And her the person who was over her, who was a full-time person, got three hundred and fifty dollars per month. But it had to show uh because they were working, they were essential workers. They got their pay. So I know that this, so our employees should have, uh, if you talk to municipal league, I think that's a good start. But I think our employees, you know, for working in during the pandemic and we have some essential workers as ga- garbage and uh police and fire. Uh, the 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 workers at City Hall Court, all these people uh are essential to the city. And I wish that you all could, before you all throw out numbers, I wish that we can meet again soon to try to figure out what, how much can we give since we did. This happened, we got March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November. That's what, nine months? Uh, nine months uh to see because they 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 had a guy uh one fifty, the part-time, they got one fifty over nine months. And um full-time, we say they got the three fifty a month. That'd been more than what we're giving and we can be reimbursed for that. I know a lot of companies uh have decided to to calculate it up over the months. When the pandemic started, when the CARES Act, when it came available, they started uh looking at how much to give their full-time. That's where I came, that's where they came up with the one fifty for the part-time and the three fifty for the full-time. Their work that had to be at work. Uh, and I think that you know, that's something that we should look at because we will be reimbursed that money back. And our employees do need it. I I wish you all could find out today so we can see if we can get those monies to them as soon as possible. That's what I, that's what I was told and and I saw. So that that's my thing to you.
Well, let me be clear. What's before the council is a resolution to approve a one-time pandemic payment. Payable in December of five hundred and fifty dollars per full-time employee. Two hundred and fifty dollars per part-time employee. And then additional for first responders. Um, payable out of federal state funds that were made available for this purpose. We have to be very careful what we call the money. Because if you call this, some of the terms have been thrown around, then it uh changes the nature of what you can do and what you can't do. After consulting with consulting with the municipal league and others. Uh, this would be our recommendation. So the question before the group tonight is, do you want to approve? That is before you uh for city employees or not?
I would like to uh so well, so move because they need something. Well, can I ask this question? How long would it be? Would it be this week they get paid? They get this money. How fast can we get this money out to them?
Well, the resolution says it must be paid in December.
Okay, okay. Let me ask this question. So what if what if there were employees who worked, who who just recently quit or recently? Uh, just decided to look for employment in the west? So can you put them in the guidelines that if they if they have left within the last thirty, ninety days? How would that work? I mean, so, I mean, current employees? That's just my thing. So can it can't come back to somebody say, well, I worked and I didn't get anything. Just we talking about current.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So that's just my thing, but uh I'm I'm moved to uh do that. I I wish that we can pay it. Okay, Mr. Turner, how soon can we pay this? Can we can we pay this tomorrow? Or can we pay it by Friday so we can get this out to um our employees? Whatever you all want to, whatever you whatever you want to call it, it's fine with me. Uh, but I I I I move to accept whatever terms y'all want to call it, but let's get this out. Uh, as soon as possible to our employees. They do need it. And I thank you, Mr. Turner, uh, from for uh looking out for that. I thank you for trying your best to look out for. Our our city's employees and council. I thank y'all if y'all actively with me.
Uh, one thing with Frank, well, go ahead and finish your motion. I'm sorry, man. One thing with Frank brought up, and I don't want to stop the discussion. I think y'all need to frame what it's for. I don't thi- I think most of the time was in process asking the question as to who qualifies, what time period it started, but. But Franklin went ahead and made his motion before Mr. Turner answered the question.
Well, I think is for now, what we had come up with was uh. And I don't, and that's up for the the council can decide. I think we had suggested, my suggestion was that. And the clerk was that employees had that had been employee, had been employed by September thirtieth. I think, and I think that's a suggestion that she made, we were employee by at least September thirtieth. And we had different staggered amounts for first responders, other city employees, volunteer fire and uh part-time police officers.
Uh, the the other questions for for clarity's sake would be the follow-up is me. Uh, what if a person was separated from the city during any of this type of period? Because because we've been in this. For a while. So would you address that so the council understand what they voted on?
Now, that's something we can discuss. Uh, we we discussed it sometime this afternoon, but we didn't come to any definite conclusion. And so uh there are any concerns, I mean, we'll certainly open up for suggestions.
Well, I I just want to make sure there's this resolution in everybody's packet.
I haven't received my packet yet. Um, are are you including or are you naming essential workers for the city also? I know you said.
Well, Ms. Ford, let me let me answer that. Um, the the language that we use in this resolution is important. Uh, there is a distinction with the difference made between. Uh, all of the terms that have sort of been banded about. The only way to do this, uh, and what I would say is an equitable way across the board is to call it a pandemic payment, which is what other governments have done. Once you get into using terms like hazard and all the other terms have been talked about, then there are legal requirements and stipulations. That have to be addressed. Um, so in order to get. The the base in 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 ways that will not be in favor of the employee, I might add. So in order to to err on the side of the employee on this issue, uh, we're calling the pandemic payment, which has been used by other governments. Uh, which is across the board with um an additional. Uh, for those uniformed first responders. And then there's a distinction between full-time, part-time and September thirtieth, I believe, was the was the date provided. Uh. And it's something that we can do that's not going to affect our uh general fund or general revenue. Uh, because of the federal government. So. Um, it's something that we can do and at the same time, you know, we're uh. Recognizing in that resolution.
I agree. When you're calling out, I don't have my packet. I I didn't get a packet. Um, but I was, you know, you were calling out seven hundred and fifty for uh. Police, uh, who else is uh? There, because there are some essential workers also in our city. What what, you know, I I I'm talking about the amount.
We we. Oh, let me just say this. All all employees will get, all full-time employees as of September thirtieth. Under this proposal, get a five hundred and fifty dollar one-time pandemic payment in December. All part-time employees as of September thirtieth get at least two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, one-time pandemic payment in December. If you are a uniformed police or fire first responders, you get that additional amount. And that additional amount totals, totals, seven fifty for full-time, uniformed first responders. And three fifty, I believe, Derek, for full for part-time, uniformed first responders. Again, payable in December, one-time pandemic payment. And the language really is important. Uh, terms like essential employees, frontline workers, hazard pay, all of those have legal consequences when you use those terms. So and consulting others and and looking at what other governments have done. Uh, primarily, it's uh the best way to refer to that as a as a pandemic payment.
Okay, so for clarity's sake, the line that you're drawing, they must have been employed on September the thirtieth. So someone was not here, that they left the city, though the pandemic started in March officially. And and if they left before September thirtieth, they would not be eligible to receive these benefits. Is that correct?
That's the way the resolution reads right now, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. That's what that's what I thought you were saying.
So there was a motion made and I don't want to ignore that. Uh, Mr. Franklin, or is your motion still alive?
It's my motion is still well alive.
Okay, Mr. Franklin makes a motion. And Ms. Sandy, do we have a resolution number?
Uh, it's gonna be twelve.
To adopt resolution twelve regarding one-time pandemic payment to city employees provided by federal funds. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who said that?
None.
Uh, Mr. Rutherford, second motion.
Can I ask a question? Okay, Mayor, are these are for active people? That were on the currently active people that were on the payroll as of September thirtieth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the resolution? Sandy Col- Ms. Ramsey Colero.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis? Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Rocket? Saint Columbia? Mr. Saint Columbia? Okay, that's uh four yes and two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the last item on the agenda. Uh, by statutory uh law, the mayor is required to propose a. A budget uh by December first. Uh, so so to you or provided for you should be. Uh, proposed twenty twenty fiscal year, twenty twenty-one year uh budget uh from my office and. Uh, I'm gonna hit two or three highlights and request, if possible, that uh. I think we're going to talk about having some budget workshops and then we have another city council meeting coming up. Uh, to give you a chance to read through it and, you know, you don't have to wait till a meeting to ask me a question or Derek or Mr. Turner. Who has, I want to not hesitate to say, worked extremely hard on this. Um. Uh, we both spent a lot of hours on it. Mr. Turner actually does the data in data input. Um, and the number crunching and and my. Want to publicly thank him for his hard work uh on this as a city treasurer. And I know it's a beginning, not an ending uh process. But uh it has been submitted effective today by statutory requirements. So this will make that point. Few things, uh, I do include in that, out of general general fund, a three percent COLA. A cost of living increase for all employees that are not getting the minimum wage increase or another raise. So January first, uh, federal state law requires to have another minimum wage increase, which will be eleven dollars an hour. Um, so those employees who are minimum wage will automatically get that. Uh, and that is included in the budget. If you do not get a minimum wage increase and you are not otherwise getting a raise, then you will. Also get an automatic three percent cost of living increase. Uh, which Mr. Turner and I are looking at cost of living. Uh. Uh, formula that's been used in the federal state government and across the country. Um, felt like three percent was a reasonable. Uh, most used number. And my personal preference is to under-promise and over-deliver. Uh, so that we don't make mistakes that's happened in the past where we promised a three percent raise and then we have to go back on our promises. So. I think it's important to be. Uh, mindful that we can't predict with certainty what the next revenue will be in fiscal twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Turner is one of the best I've ever seen at predicting those things, uh, to tell you the truth, and I'm very confident in his projections. But even the best projectionists can't foresee certain things and COVID is a perfect example of that. Uh, nobody could have foreseen that this time like a year ago, probably. Um. So three percent is a is a healthy increase and we did not do COLA last year. I'm not sure the last time the CO- the city actually funded thoroughly a COLA for all employees. Um, but that's in my budget and I'm very proud of that. Uh, did they deserve more? Yes, but at the same time, uh, as our audits have shown. We have worked as a group, as a team, the last two years uh to pay off our bills. And to get ourselves from what was a very. and to get ourselves from what was a very dangerous financial situation into a positive situation. But that took very, uh, diligent management, uh, day-to-day, saying no to a lot of things, including, uh, Christmas bonus last year, including a COLA last year, including positions that went unsealed and people who had to step up. You know, we were talking about Bobby Jones. You, uh, it's not unusual to see him on a tractor, uh, out mowing grass with his guys. Everybody has, nobody's too good, uh, to do more, uh, for the same or less. And that's what we've had to do the last two years to buckle down and get control of our finances. And everybody who's done that deserves credit. Not just me. Um, but as a result of that, difficult period, we can now afford to do a 3% COLA and not have to worry about funding it throughout the year. So that's in the, in the budget. Uh, a few really quick things. The re- human resources issue we talked about is in there. Uh, the, uh, we have made a few changes regarding, uh, better or more robust arson investigation unit. We have two people currently at the fire department who are either licensed or very close to being certified to do arson investigations, something we haven't really done here in a very long time. And you can tell it by driving around and it adds to our blight problem on a daily basis. Um, so we can address all these and answer questions later. I just want to highlight them for you. The COVID pandemic, um, one-time payment is also, you know, made possible by, uh, additional monies we didn't anticipate this year. So that's, that means employees will be able to look forward to that payment this month and at least a 3% raise, uh, or 3% increase or minimum wage increase or other, otherwise a salary increase. All of that is in that budget and I invite you to look through it and ask any questions you want between now and the end of the year. Uh, there are a few other items, but we can, we can talk about those later, I guess. Um, anyway, uh, that's the last item on our agenda. Are there any quick questions? Uh, like I said, I prefer you to, to, th- this is a statutory requirement to present it to you tonight, which I've done. Uh, I want you to, to look at it, ask any questions you want. Uh, we're also in another separate for people that don't understand the process, separate budget process with the council. The council approves the budget, not the mayor. So, um, the council appropriates money, not the mayor. So these are basically my suggestions. And, uh, the council has to adopt its own budget and we will be doing that throughout December. As y'all know, I'm just saying that for the benefit of other people who might be paying attention. Any, any other comments or questions about that?
Man, the only thing I'd like to add is that, uh, I'd, I'd like the, the council to know just as, uh, diligently, as I work and hard as I work to help you get your budget done by, uh, December 1st, uh, proposed by December, uh, your proposed budget by December 1st and get it presented to the council. Now, council has the job of passing the budget and I work just as hard and diligently to, as I've done in the past, as, as they are, as they will know, uh, to help them do the things that they need to do to get their budget passed by, um, what is it, January, February 1st?
February 1st.
February 1st. And, uh, hopefully we can get it done by the end of the year, but, uh, whatever it takes to get it done, you know, they know. I'm at their beck and call. They can call me anytime. Have any questions, just let me know. And, uh, I, I'll work just as hard with those guys as I do with you to get your budget.
And thank you again, Mr. Turner, for all your hard work. And, you know, I am proud though that we, uh, that we, we're ending, uh, 2020. Uh, we're no longer on the caution list with legislative audit. We're no longer in operating deficit, um, in spite of many of our challenges. And we are able to give employees the minimum wage, which is required by law, but also the 3% COLA if they're not getting it and some raises as well and some shuffling around. And we did all of those things because uh, we all pushed our shoulder at the wheel and tried to do more with less the last couple of years. And, uh, so I, I mean, that thanks goes out to, to everybody. Uh, or we wouldn't be here. Otherwise, we'd still be in debt and still be behind eight ball. And so, um, or not behind eight ball. So thank you very much. And is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You, you still have the, the resolution about district court?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank, I didn't see that on the, thank you, Mr. Valley. I'm sorry about that. You want to bring that up and discuss it?
Well, uh, the city has been approached by, uh, District Court Judge-elect, uh, Jason Carter. Uh, currently the city, uh, is part of the District Court District, which is comprised of Phillips County as well as Lee County. And the courts include Helena, uh, West Helena. You have the county docket. You have E-line docket and Lakeview docket, which just King goes there. You also have Haynes and Lee County as well as the county of, of Lee County and, uh, City of Mary Anna. And there's one other internal missing. Who, who is it? But, uh,
Holy Grail.
What that? Sir?
Go ahead.
But that, but that's been a meeting, um, in Little Rock and there's another one scheduled December 4th, where they want to place Monroe County within this circuit court, within this district court district. And the, the, uh, Jason Carter, the district court judge-elect objects to it. It is impactful for us as well. And, uh, what he had asked us to do was to pass a resolution to show and we exact to it. Uh, the mayor met with me about it and, uh, I reviewed the resolution and I added some language to it because what concerns me about it, and I want to remind the council about, uh, it's not only that the judge has, will have additional responsibilities, but we have a, a court order from the United States District Court, the federal court, if you remember. We were sued regarding first appearance of defendants. And that court order is a permanent injunction on us. And the judge must, uh, have defendants appear within 72 hours if they are arrested. Uh, we were sued and, and had to wipe off, if you recall, approximately a million dollar worth of back fines for, for people as well as to pay a large amount of attorney's fees in that case. And to the extent that the, uh, uh, district court judge is going to be unavailable because he's gonna be in another county. Uh, we run the risk of running a file of that, that, that federal court order. And that's a great concern to me as city attorney that, uh, all we need is one or two cases where, where people are held without making their first appearance. And then we would have some, some issues. So the, the resolution reads in this manner. It says, a resolution regarding Monroe County District Court, uh, whereas the District Court Resources Allocation Board or D R A B at a meeting held on December, to be held on December 4th, 2020 is to make a recommendation to Arkansas Legislature regarding Monroe County District Court and whether or not to join it with another county and form a state district court district. And whereas the city of Helena West Ham is in the, the joining county and objects to being joined with Monroe County for purpose of forming a district court district. And whereas the caseload numbers dictate that Monroe County either be joined with the Arkansas County to form a district or that Monroe County be made a district of its own for the purpose of district court. And whereas the city of Helena West Ham is very concerned about the judge's availability for first appearances of defendants who have been arrested and currently, uh, has an order from the United States District Court for Eastern District Arkansas compelling it to make sure that defendants have a timely first appearance. And whereas the additional responsibility of district court will take him away from Phillips County and may cause the city of Helena West Ham to violate the United States District Court's order, now therefore be resolved by the city of Helena West Ham that it's our desire that Monroe County either be joined with Arkansas County and made a district of its own for purpose of district court. Uh, passed approved this, uh, first day of December, 2020. Uh, and so that's the entire, resolution is entirety. I suggest that, that you all adopt it so that we can go on record to object that we don't want Monroe County replaced here. Cause if I, if the district court judge is split down farther, uh, the last thing we want to do is be hauled back in federal court and, and explain why we're not getting people for a judge in a timely way.
So move.
Second.
Ms., Ms. Franklin moves adoption. What's the resolution number, Sandy?
13.
Resolution number 13, resolution regarding Monroe County District Court. And Ms. Ford, was that you seconded? I didn't catch. Who seconded?
Miss Davis.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Man, I have one question. It, it, it's just this, uh, I, I, I know we, we vote on stuff. Uh, I didn't receive a packet. And I know you said, I, I, but I received the budget and everything. But, uh, you know, I know going forward, I've always asked, can we get stuff in a timely manner? Because I wouldn't go, we wouldn't go, I wouldn't go vote on some things. And I know that timing is of the essence, but sometime make sure we get our packets earlier because some of us don't. And I would be happy to deliver packets for, uh, the council to make sure everybody get their package. If it's ready on a Thursday evening, I would be happy to hand deliver the package twice a month or whenever we have a meeting because we need to have it in a timely manner so that when it comes to the night of the meeting, we're voting on stuff to try to help the administration out. But I think that we need, uh, like, I, I don't want to be, uh, rude or anything, not vote on anything that you present, but I would like to have the, I like the, I speak for the council on this one, to have all of our, our package together so we can go over it. So that everybody have enough time. And that's just something I want to throw out there. No, no disrespect to you. I know we always get it by email, but if sometimes y'all have a packet ready, I will be, would be hap, more than happy to deliver it. And that's, there's no disrespect to anybody. Just, just throwing it out there. So when you get them ready, I'll pick them up and deliver.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, simple. I, I think the police department is supposed to deliver all those and, uh, I just think we need to get them to the police department so they can deliver them all in a timely fashion.
Any other comments or questions on the resolution? Okay, call her out.
Forward? Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Forward? Crockett? St. Columbia? Me?
Uh, I, yes.
Four yes, three absent.
Okay, my she passes. And, and, uh, let me just say that, uh, the pa, as we discussed at last Tuesday's meeting, because of Thanksgiving, we didn't have the time that we normally do to prepare for this meeting. So initially we had talked about not even having a meeting because of the people who are out and the difficulty in getting our packets together. So my apologies if you didn't get a complete packet in a timely manner. On this last particular resolution, it was something that, um, Judge-elect Carter asked us to, reminded us to that today, this morning, and asked us if we could do it. Basically said I would, I would, you know, certainly could write a letter and we would ask y'all if you wanted to do it. And, uh, Mr. Mr. Valley understands the district court, uh, politics and issues, uh, territory. And so we, you know, better than most. So I, we talked about it extensively and I'm glad he reminded me because it wasn't even on the agenda. Uh, so my, uh, uh, just decided, you know, th- this is an unusual meeting because of Thanksgiving. And, uh, anyway, we'll try to make sure you, uh, get everything in a timely manner for the next meeting. All right. Uh, no other questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Just one, one, one quick thing.
Yes, Mr. Riley.
Um, I, 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 at this point, I've been around a few blocks, uh, with the city. And, uh, some other people listening in have been around more than I have. Uh, but instead of us waiting to the last minute to do what we all know is coming, um, can I just go ahead and make a motion to extend the 2020 budget until February 1st of 2021? Uh, we end up in the crunch doing this every year. And so, uh, that won't fore, that won't foreclose us adopting a new budget before the year is out, but at least we won't have to address it later on.
So move. Second, I'm sorry.
Make a motion that we extend the fiscal year 2020 budget to February 1st, 2021, uh, in the event that we do not pass the budget by the end of the calendar fiscal year 2020. Ms. Franklin, do you second the motion?
Yes.
Any, uh, other questions or comments about the motion? You know, is this a resolution? Ms. Ramsey, what, what's the number on that?
Just be a motion.
It's a motion.
Just a motion? Okay. If there's another, other questions or comments, call her out.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin?
Yes.
St. Columbia? Four yes.
Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Adley. Any other business?
Hey, Mayor, I just got one, Mayor. It's, uh, I, I know we talked about the CARES Act money, but it's like with the police, uh, with the fire and police uniform. Would that be considered, you know, uh, where they can get uniforms on the CARE, CARES Act? Would that be something that we can look into and see if there's any funding due to them working? Would there be any kind of funding to help out with, with uniforms for police and fire?
Well, we, we put that in there, an additional, uh, 250 for uniformed police and fire.
No, 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 Mayor.
That was in the, that was in the payment that, that motion that's already approved tonight.
No, 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 Mayor, I'm talking about for uniform, for, for the uniforms they wear on the street, not, not that, not uniform officer, but their, their police uniform, like, like the, the fire.
Am I saying that? Am, am I mistaken in that what we, we specifically addressed uniformed police and fire, right?
Yeah, I think what he's saying is he's not talking about the payment to them as far as, uh, uh, s- salary or, or wage.
Right.
He, he means the actual, like the uniform expense, like the pants, the, the shirts and those, the, the actual uniform, not a uniformed employee. And I, I, I'm thinking, uh, Mr. Franklin, I'm not exactly sure. I believe so, but that may be an allowable expense and that's something that we'll definitely look into. But I believe that that, that may be an allowable expense. But like I said, me and the mayor and I will definitely look into it and, and, and Ms. Harvard as well. She, uh, helps us a lot with those type of things. But, yeah, I mean, that's something that I didn't think about, but I, I think that is a, an allowable expense. But I'll definitely check into it.
You're talking about actual?
Yeah, he's talking about.
Actual uniforms that people wear?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Cause see, I know.
Street department sanitation, EVA.
Right. Cause see, I know other, I know, uh, other people have, um, sorry, Mr. Turner, but I know other people, Mayor, are using that so they can get their people their, uh, uniforms, uh, and they pay for the cost of it because, uh, they have worked during, during the pandemic. I, I don't know what you, I didn't forget the title that you want us to use, but it would also help our police and fire and street sanitation department with uniforms. So we could be reimbursed that money because they, they, they worked during the pandemic. It's, uh, put a strain on us and them for uniform, uniform wise.
So a uniform fund, basically.
Yes, sir.
I can certainly ask that question. I misunderstood what you said earlier. I'm sorry, but, um, yeah, we can certainly ask that question and get back with you.
And then when you do, Mayor, can you, uh, let the department heads know? Because like the fire, the, the police and fire, you know, but it'd be, it'd be a, a good chance to go ahead and and get, get their, and get them everything they need. Then you go reach out to the street sanitation department and the water department. Let's not forget the water department. As well, anybody who wears a, a city uniform, especially with the police and fire, their, their, their gear, uh, it could have got damaged during, uh, the, the storm or any, anything that we can say, we can put, so we don't have to return any CARES Act money back. Uh, I know, um, I, I got a friend down in Pine Bluff. They said they was, they was kind of using it to get uniforms and stuff. So they, they want to get everything they can. And I.
Now, that, we'll definitely look at that. The one thing I want to say pretty clearly, and, and I want to say this as somebody who has a profession of, of selling health insurance. Our employees are unbelievably lucky that they don't have to pay health insurance. Now, the administration that approved that was not mine, but, uh, they need to remember that. They need to remember that while we don't pay. As much as some cities do and we don't pay as much as maybe other certainly private companies do. We're taxpayer funded and we're limited by what we can do by the constitution that says that cities cannot run a deficit. And at the same time, try to meet the obligations to the citizens who pay those taxes. When it comes to street fire and all the rest of it. And so it's one of setting priorities and one of the priorities that was established before I became mayor was to pay a hundred percent of health insurance. Cost for an employee. That is an incredible benefit in this day and time where people are paying twenty five hundred dollars a month. Three thousand dollars a month and still have a five thousand dollar deductible. And forty percent co-pays and all kinds of craziness out there. I, I think we're way ahead of the rest of the country. This is probably what we set out to do. With ACA, but for political reasons, plenty of blame to go around. It hadn't turned out quite like I think President Obama or anybody else intended. But Helen is doing that. Helen West Town does that for its, its employees. With a five hundred dollar deductible, all your insurance paid, that is an incredibly good benefit. That they will not get very many places. And that's something that we maybe forget about sometimes or take advantage or take, or take for granted. But we shouldn't do that. Our employees are not the best paid as, as, as well as we'd like. We're, we're guided and, and we're, we're barricaded by our own resources. So yeah, I will definitely look at those options and. But I do want to make sure and make sure this is heard clearly. This year. The employees are gonna get, full time employees are gonna get a five hundred dollar one time. Pandemic payment in December or seven fifty if they're first responders, uniformed first responders. Three percent COLA, which haven't gotten in a while. Minimum wage increase if they're on minimum wage. And some key employees will get a much needed raises, all of that because we've been physically prudent with our revenue and our resources the last couple of years. So. What I want to do is to help our employees and I think that's what we did tonight and I'm very proud of that and I hope they understand. That we are all of us tonight trying to do our best to value our employees. So having said that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
The Germans are second.
Second.
Mr. Davis second, so there are no objections, may adjourn. Thank y'all very much.